Hi, everybody. Welcome. Welcome, everybody who's in the audience. Welcome, everybody at home. This is the work session of the Mayor and Council Meeting, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Linda, will you please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement, please, and take roll call?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, and on the borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the April third, two thousand and twenty-three sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in a municipal building and borough website. Councilwoman Homan?
Here.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole? Pabston. Councilman Yakarino?
Here.
Councilman Delaurecio?
Here.
Mayor Wazinski?
Here, thank you. We have a proclamation this evening in recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month. I think that mental health has just been in the forefront of, I think, everybody, and especially after COVID. So Councilwoman Homan will do us the honors to reading the proclamation.
Thank you so much, ma'am. "In recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month, two thousand and twenty-three, whereas mental health is essential to overall health and well-being, and people experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and should feel comfortable in seeking help and support to manage these times. And whereas, like physical illness, mental illness is a condition that can be treated effectively through prevention, early identification, and early intervention. And with effective treatment, all individuals with mental illness can make progress towards recovery and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, mental illness affects one in five people in the United States, and the experience can be devastating for individuals and families with little knowledge or access to mental health services. And whereas, the COVID-nineteen pandemic has created a multitude of mental health challenges for our community members of all ages, and connecting people to care is more important than ever. And whereas, May is annually recognized throughout the nation as Mental Health Awareness Month, and whereas it is the tenth anniversary of the beginning of the stigma-free initiative in Bergen County, with Paramus initially declaring itself a stigma-free zone in two thousand and thirteen. And whereas, Allendale declared themselves as a stigma-free zone and will continue to support the stigma-free initiative. And whereas, stigma-free zones aim to inspire public interest and open dialogue about stigma, raise awareness of the diseases of mental illness, and create a culture wherein residents who have the diseases of mental illness feel free to seek treatment for the disease without fear of stigma. And whereas, local resources are available to treat the disease of mental illness so that no one resident needs to suffer alone or feel hopeless. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Borough of Allendale recognizes the community needs and continues to support the efforts of Bergen County, of the county of Bergen, in continuing to be a stigma-free zone." Right on behalf of Mayor Amy Wazinski.
Excellent, thank you very much.
It's so important, and I, I-
Especially working at the high school, you must really see the impact.
Well, and I do see the impact, too, of people really reaching out and helping. So I feel like I have seen the positive culture that has developed, too. And I can say that high school does a tremendous amount, and is, you know, the staff and the support staff and the teachers. It is really amazing, but there's just a continued need at all levels, so.
Well, very happy that Allendale can do their part as well. So now we have public comment, those wishing to speak on anything, on the, on anything can come up and speak. Anybody?
No.
Not seeing anybody. We are going to do some agenda review. We have some time, so let me just switch to our regular session. We have, after approval of minutes, we have a second reading, reading of our ordinance, which is with regards to officers, employees, fixing the salary and wage, just cleaning up and updating our salary ordinance, and we also, as, I'm sorry, for second reading. And then we also actually have an ordinance as well that we're introducing this evening, which is to exceed the municipal cap. It's something that we do every year. We have a resolution that we'll be introducing that is going to change the time and place of, well, not the place, technically, the time of the mayor and council meetings. We're starting at the same time, at seven-thirty, but sometimes if we don't have a lot on the agenda, we have a gap where we have to stay for fifteen minutes and just kind of wait. So this time now, we're starting at seven-thirty, and then we'll just go right into our regular session if we have the time. When I became mayor, I wanted to kind of clean up some clunkiness, and I thought that was just kind of something that was just a little clunky. We're also going to allow public comment on any topic instead of limiting to any items on the agenda. So anytime we have public comment, it's on anything that the public would like to say and say. So on our consent agenda, we have what we have every year. Our consent agenda is some of the items that don't necessarily need separate discussion for each one. They are more random things, but I'd like to go through some of them that are worthy of a little bit of mention. One is our temporary budget appropriation. We do this all the time. We also have snow removal, municipal service contract. What we have to do every year also is update our personnel policies manual handbook. AHI, which is taking over senior housing, are looking to construct some senior units at Seaback Court. So we are transferring money from the trust fund for them to do that and start that. And let's see, we have appointment of our new Assistant Fire Chief. And tonight, we will be talking about the approval of this settlement. You think this is a good time to discuss that?
True.
From the mayor's approach. So this is just something that I wanted to address because this, this is something that is very important, important, and as far as I know, has not happened in Allendale. We have a settlement that we had that involved the borough and some police officers. I just would like to state for the record that the promotional process was fair and it was transparent. The person who scored the highest answered the questions in the most professional way and who exemplified the best leadership capabilities to serve Allendale and protect Allendale residents is the one who got the job. Mike Dillon scored the highest based on the scoring methodology and was ultimately promoted to chief of police of Allendale. So in summary, the promotional ordinance, the inflammation, inflammation, implementation, thank you, of the promotional ordinance and the resultant appointment of Mike Dillon as chief has been affirmed. It has not been easy for the borough, for anybody. We're certainly not happy about this, but we have been strongly advised to come to this settlement due to the cost-benefit factor. Most importantly, we need to move on, and Chief Dillon needs to move on to lead the department without any distraction. I don't think you'll find one person in the borough, including people on this day, that will argue that Chief Dillon is the best person for the job, and we're all happy for him, and we're happy to put this behind us. All right. And we have a little bit of time, and we can start our committee reports. Councilman O- Oh.
Thank you, mayor. I have mine and public safety as well, if that's okay. The DPW preparation of fields for this weekend's opening day are almost completed. The filling of the lake is underway. The clock tower rehab project is underway, and will be done by Memorial Day. Phase three and four of the downtown street, Streetscape project are ninety-five percent complete, and plans will be starting for phases five and six on the project within the next few weeks. And as far as public safety goes, Allendale Police Department and Public Safety are working together to conduct interviews for new officers. Chief just told me there's two more to be interviewed coming up. Special thanks to Saddle River Police for assisting in a mandatory active shooter training of Allendale police officers. Digital alternative to coin parking is close to being launched with an issue with signage caused a slight delay. And next Friday, April twenty-first, there will be a DWI car crash simulation at the high school weather committing, and there may be a medical helicopter landing at the school field for demonstration purposes. That's all I have, mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Delaurecio?
Thank you, mayor. So the Land Use Committee had our monthly meeting this morning. You were in attendance, so thank you for that. We discussed some code change to our portion of our code for ancillary structures, to add some language for sheds. So we're going to put that to Mr. Wiss to potentially look at the change. We discussed a couple of resident issues that the borough engineer and our code official has taken a look at. Also, we reviewed and confirmed that Governor Murphy's order about outdoor eaters are still in effect till March twenty-fourth. So our code official is going to notify the necessary restaurants in town and let them know that that order is still in effect. We had, we had some discussion about some changes to our sign ordinance. We're waiting for some additional information from our borough planner. Also, some of our property maintenance, we had a brief discussion about some follow-ups that our DPW, our Director of Operations, Mr. Kistner, and also our maintenance facilitator, Mr. Limentola, have been following up on to keep the borough clean and in order, as they always do, they do a great job on that. I'm just trying to think. We also had a couple of discussions about some stormwater, things that are coming through with the county and the state, so reviewing that. And that's pretty much it for land use. I've been discussing about the, the package and the cheat sheet for applicants. I'm ninety percent done. I hope to have that for review.
That's gonna be great.
Yep, it's, I apologize, I am working on it.
No need to apologize.
Than I anticipated, but I want it to be right. And one more thing I just wanted to say, so on behalf of the holiday observers, I just want to thank the borough, DPW, Ron Kistner, in particular, Allendale Police for all the support that you always give to holiday observers, especially at our Easter egg hunt, which was last week. So thank you very much for that. That's all I have.
Oh, go ahead.
I forgot to mention one thing. We're gonna have Dirt Day this Saturday, from ten to two. Bring your shovels, bring your transportation. We're gonna point you in the direction, you have to shovel it and pull it away yourself, it's clean dirt, and we'll be there from ten to two. That's all.
Excellent, thank you. Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Can we just get me for one moment and come back to me? I think Allison's on her way up.
No problem. Councilwoman Homan?
Sure, thank you very much. So first of all, I, I'm glad to see everybody, and it's such a nice day. I feel like it's really moving into the spring. And, and I too also, and I think it's the appropriate time, would like to just make a mention around the settlement of the suit that we had had. I can say that when the exciting process of identifying an Allendale police chief began, I was pleased that the entire council was going to have the opportunity to weigh in on such an important decision. Allendale has always been fortunate to have, you know, such a police force that we were proud of. And the chief is really a role that does report into the council. And having served on the council at that time for over seven years, I was well aware of the importance of having an organized, thoughtful, and detail-oriented individual who wanted to lead a police force with positivity and work with the community and the borough council for the good of Allendale as a whole. Once we had interested candidates, the council portion was set up in a very straightforward manner. Each candidate was given an opportunity to answer the same set of questions and share with the mayor and the council, one of those people being me, you know, their thoughts and, you know, given time to express their willingness to work with the elected leadership. I felt like the process went smoothly, and I was surprised to learn that we were being sued. And I'm glad that the suit is being, has been settled, and I believe that the council did well in the execution and the outcome of the process. So I'm hopeful that we can put what has been a difficult chapter behind us and work together to serve the Allendale residents and all that interact with our community. So thank you, Ray, and the rest of the team for your work in, in having this come to a resolution so we can move forward.
Thank you very much.
Sure, as far as water, let's see. We, I might miss some things, but Ray, I'm gonna let you give, you know, some of the updates as far as the legal portion of having these easements, which need to all be resolved before we can have the three-point-five million that is still being held in escrow. So Ray's been working, they have meetings every week or every other week, and that's, you know, it's, it's progress with the engineers, et cetera. We also met with Veolia, Ron, myself, Amy, John Gill, and some of the leadership team from Veolia, and we met to speak about the progress of the PFAS temporary treatment for both the New Street Treatment Plant as well as temporary treat, as well as temporary treatment for Well eleven. And Ron actually just sent out a picture of the new treatment vessels that are going in on, on New Street. And, and it is amazing. And the reality is, is that if the community had not voted to, in support of our sale of the water system to Veolia, that we would not be at this standpoint. Moving this type of a project forward is very complicated, even getting, you know, the vessels and all of the things in order to do that is, is very challenging. And I am really pleased that we have Veolia to keep this moving forward. So it's a positive step, and I will keep you updated as we move forward as to what is going on within the New Street. Well eleven, Veolia is actively pursuing the approval for temporary treatment there also. So this is the well that had PFOA results that put us into violation this past fall. So that well was turned off since we were alerted to that violation. And so while Veolia is moving forward, the process of receiving the necessary permits and approvals is full of challenges. And the realistic expectation for this temporary treatment is this coming September area, so sometime in the fall. So what this means is that if the demand for water this summer is at the same level as it was in two thousand and twenty-two, we will need to turn on Well eleven. And the reason for that is that the water system is run as a pressurized system. So you have to have, you know, a certain amount of water in the system to keep it pressurized. If you do not, you will then, we will then have a boil water advisory. So just want to make sure John Gill is working with all of us with Veolia and with the Water Committee to put together some communication out to residents just so that they're aware, we will be keeping everybody apprised if the well needs to get turned on. I mean, the numbers are, you know, we are, we were in violation, but they're not up as high as many communities have seen. And we'll just have to, you know, play it by ear as it goes. So I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. And I think that's about the gist of it. Oh, as far as the sewers go, again, we are working to have the sewers that are on streets where there's been construction, having them actually camered. So if some of those sewer lines need to be repaired, it would be done while the road is still in some form of disruption, is that a good way to say it? So I'm pleased that, you know, that Ron and Mike Breland and Northwest Bergen Sewer Authority are all kind of working together to make sure that that works. So that is my report. Thank you very much. I'm a pleasure.
Councilman Yakarino?
Thank you, mayor. A relatively short report this evening. Crestwood Lake memberships open on Monday for applications. I know that everybody's very excited about that, and I'm sure some of us wish that we were there today and yesterday, so forth.
People were.
Again, we're hoping to, I'm sure people were. We're working on getting the Crestwood newsletter out. Last week, it's gonna be similar to how we had it last year. We're gonna update some things, talk about some of the exciting things that are happening this year. Talked to Tierney this week, the band schedule is set, we may add one more. So we're still looking at that. Preparations are underway, as Councilman O'Connell noted, thanks to the DPW and Ron and Tom for their help on that. And we're excited for opening day, probably in about a month or so, with Memorial Day coming up. The concession stand, we made the decision to continue on with another season of the concession stand after taking a look at some of the cost implications, materials, and also trying to figure out what's the best way for us to move forward with that project in terms of cost to benefit and so forth, in terms of what kind of the best options are there. So we're evaluating a few different things there. With the kitchen renovation project, that is going to be a two thousand and twenty-three project. Suzanne and I had spoken about that today. She helped contact another vendor to try to get some options for that. So again, that's a team effort project, and I appreciate your help with that. So that, again, we're looking to move that along quite soon. Some other things, we have very exciting, a new copier in the clerk's office as of next Tuesday.
That is always fun, isn't it?
We're happy John Gillis.
John, I called John to make sure he's gonna be there. The current one that we have is ten years old, it's, it's passed. So we engaged with the new vendor that's provided actually somewhat of a cost savings to the boroughs.
Yeah, that's what I did.
It's a new technology.
That's what I'm excited about.
Better scanner, so definitely good things. So that's gonna be Tuesday, two-thirty, if anybody wants to come and witness it.
It is, exactly.
I will film it and send photos. Other than that, our next facilities meeting will be next Thursday at five o'clock, so the next council meeting, I'll have more to report.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. One thing that I failed to mention on the agenda review was the new business, which was introduction of our two thousand and twenty-three municipal budget. And with that, I will lead into Councilwoman Lovasolo, who has the Admin Finance Committee, to give her report.
Yes, thank you. So, you know, I just really wanted to start off by thanking you, mayor, for first putting me on this committee this year and for the insight that you provided with your years of experience on the council. This committee, this committee was an incredible learning experience for me, and I continue to enjoy really being a part of it. And it's been fun working on it. Thanks to our borough administrator, Ron Kistner, for juggling staffing losses with some great new hires and reassignments and for retaining and compensating valuable borough employees. We have and are improving on a really good borough hall team, and I thank you for that, Ron. I want to thank my finance committee's second, Liz Homan, our borough clerk, Linda Servino, and our department heads, including Chief Dillon, for their part in this committee and for being real about your budgets and numbers and projecting costs. Thanks to my finance advisory committee member, which is in the audience tonight. We met on March thirtieth, and as usual, this group asked questions and gave suggestions and continue to willingly offer their assistance in the budget review process and beyond. So we really do thank you for that. And then real sincere thanks to our new CFO, Allison Otano. You know, our finance office with Allison, Gina, and Carol is a really solid group. And we knew we were gonna miss Alyssa, but Allison has come on board and steered our course and is forcing us to project forward and perpetually is thinking of new ways to safeguard our taxpayers. And even today, she sent us an email showing that she's constantly taking a look at things and thinking outside of the box and preparing us for down the road. So thank you, Allison, for all that you've done. So on behalf of all of these very, very involved people in the mayor and council, we are pleased to introduce our two thousand and twenty-three budget with a zero percent municipal increase this year. A big part of this, and Liz touched on the sale of the water, with the borough's debt being paid off in large part due to the sale of our water utility system and that money being applied to our outstanding debt from previous years' capital improvement projects, even with the significant increases we are looking at with pensions and healthcare increases. And then, of course, the, the garbage collection contract projection renewal and the increase in that, we are comfortable with our zero percent this year. So I thank all of you who helped make this possible, and, and thank you again, mayor.
Excellent. I think I'll give my mayor's report because I'd like to piggyback on that and just say it was a process as always. Every single year, we go through the budget, we start with zero. I think we had eleven versions this time. And there's always that back and forth of, you know, should you have an increase? Can you keep it at zero? And we really wanted to offer the residents a zero this time when we actually could do it. We have an opportunity that will never, ever come up again. Our CFO felt comfortable with it, so, you know, we went with it. We do have a lot of challenges, as do many towns coming up. I mean, everything is going up, as we all know, in our households. So just thanks for the team. Allison, you've been definitely a great addition. Thanks to Suzanne for really stepping up into this role when I know that you didn't know anything about it, but you really did take the time and learn it, and you were a great addition. And of course, Liz Homan, who is always a great advocate in anything that she does. And of course, the sale of the water is really, really, really helped us with this budget, and we would not have had that with all the efforts of Councilwoman Liz Homan. Compost permits are on sale. We have new hours of our recycling center. Saturday is the same, nine to three, but instead of Sunday, we have a new day now during the week, which is Wednesday from four to seven. As Tyler said, registration starts at Crestwood Lake, so I have to always say that, too. So sorry, can't let that one go, but we will-
I tried to sneak it in there.
The lake will actually be, we're filling it, too, right? Have we started, we're starting filling it. So we're starting to fill the lake, the lake takes about three weeks to fill. So have fun trying to keep people out of the lake, Mike, while it's filling eighty degrees.
They were there today.
But it's not, there's not enough water to swim yet, but.
That gets the red bar onto the beach.
Yeah, yeah, people just, they can't wait to get in there, so. So it's gonna be great, we're really looking forward to it. I'm super psyched that, you know, Tyler's at the helm this year, so there's gonna be a lot of great stuff at Crestwood. Councilwoman Lovasolo, and I met with Superintendent Scott Beckerman at Northern Highlands, as well as the Business Administrator, Sue Anne Mathers. We reviewed their school proposed budget. We also reviewed some of the great programs that they have going on there. It's such an amazing school, it really is. I know I'm a little biased because I went there, but it is an amazing school, what they offer the students. We also toured the grounds, we saw their tennis courts, we saw the beginning of their new field house. So it's gonna be super exciting for the new kids coming in in the next couple of years. I also met with the Boy Scouts, and we talked about environmental issues affecting the community and also explored the constitutional rights and obligations of a U.S. citizen. It actually was a really fun meeting. They were super engaged, they asked lots of questions, and it was a lot of fun, so. That's kind of the fun part of being mayor, I think, that do that kind of stuff. Two-twenty, if you've driven by, you will see that it is going vertical. So there's the stairwell in place, there's also the elevator shaft in place, and they're framing it out so you can actually see where the courtyard's gonna be, and it's really, really exciting. We have been working extremely hard with our spec for our community center. And we just can't wait, it's gonna be amazing. We've just been trying to make every single detail perfect, so when we go to bid, it'll be a smooth transition. And we're hoping to go to bid in the next couple, bid in the next couple of weeks. So that is gonna be a super exciting time for Allendale, and I can't wait to break ground with that. And three minutes to spare, I am done with my report. Do we have a committee report?
I worked on it as much as I can.
John Gill? Do we have a staff report from you?
I'm looking forward to work with Tyler, our, well, first of all, half these newsletter went out. So we got that out earlier this month than usual.
Good job.
So now rolling on to Crestwood Newsletter, and actually working with clerk's office gearing up our office to start registrations on Monday.
Excellent, thank you very much.
And working on the water information.
And of course, the walking clerk.
With the great picture, we like communication in the borough, so we appreciate all that you do for that. Our clerk?
Just very short, we welcome Kim Elvery on April third to the clerk's office. Amanda and John have been training her, and she's doing very well, so thank you, John, and thanks to Amanda.
Excellent. Do we have time? Let's see, who's got a short report out of the, okay. Ron Kistner, our Director of Operations, your report?
I'll have Mike Breland file the stormwater report, and how the grant is here, and how it's going to fall in the next twelve, twelve thousand. And I'm just gonna file the fourth, and then the ninth, and all the fourth, so those are all filed, so.
Excellent, thank you very much. And I think we'll just wait for the rest, we've got one minute left. So meeting adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye, yes, thank you.
Everybody, it's eight o'clock, and this is the regular meeting of the mayor and council. It is April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Linda, will you please read the Open Public Meetings Act and also take roll call?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the April third, two thousand and twenty-three sunshine notice. Notice of this meeting by the April third, two thousand and twenty-three sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website. Councilwoman Holman.
Here.
Councilwoman Lovasola.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Toole, absent. Councilman Yakarino.
Here.
Councilman Delavicio.
Here.
Mayor Wazinski.
Here. Um, okay, can anybody please put this flag? Okay, we have second reading and public hearing of ordinance twenty-three dash oh. Oops, I'm sorry. We have approval of minutes. Um, do we have a motion to approve March twenty-third work and regular session minutes?
So moved.
Second, please?
Second.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Lovasola?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole is absent, Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavicio?
Yes.
Okay, now we have second reading and public hearing of ordinance twenty-three dash oh seven.
The following ordinance published herewith was first read by title only on March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the Municipal Building and Borough Website. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven, an ordinance to amend chapter fifty-three of the Code of the Borough of Allendale, officers and employees to fix the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers and employees of the Borough of Allendale for the year two thousand and twenty-three.
Does anybody from the public would like to speak to this ordinance? Not seeing anyone. Um, so we have resolution twenty-three dash eighteen, the approval of the time and place of mayor and council meeting. Do I have a motion?
Right, you have to get them, you know, you need to get the approval.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So moved, Lovasola. Second, Holman.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasola.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole is absent, Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Councilman Delavicio.
Yes.
Okay, now we have resolution twenty-three dash one one eight, approval of the time and place of the mayor and council meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Holman.
Second, please.
Second, Delavicio.
All right.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Lovasola?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole is absent, Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavicio.
Yes.
Okay, so now we have introduction of ordinance twenty-three dash oh eight.
You need a motion?
Uh, can I have a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-three dash oh eight?
So moved, Holman. Second, Lovasola?
Please read that.
Mm-hmm. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero eight, calendar year two thousand and twenty-three. Um, sorry, calendar year two thousand and twenty-three, ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA forty A, colon, four dash forty-five, point fourteen.
Okay. Right, our next consent agenda?
One second.
There you go.
So the hearing, the hearing is um, May eleventh.
Okay.
Two thousand and twenty-three at seven thirty P.M., or as soon as thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasola?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole, absent, Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavicio.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved, O'Connell.
Second, Yakarino.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasola?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole is absent, Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavicio?
Yes, on everything, and I abstain from resolution twenty-three dash one two three.
Okay, ready? Um, any unfinished business? Uh, and new business, we have resolution twenty-three dash one twenty-nine, introduce the two thousand and twenty-three municipal budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Lovasola.
Second, Holman. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasola?
Yeah.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole is absent, Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavicio?
Yes.
Okay, so we did our community reports, except I want to read um, Matt's report, because I forgot to do that. Um, Matt just wanted to um, comment and say thank you to Mr. Wiss and Mr. McDonald for guiding us through this unfortunate situation regarding the settlement and bringing it to a swift conclusion. We look forward to putting this behind us, moving forward in a positive direction under Chief Dylan's leadership. Just want to make sure I got that in. Um, as far as staff reports, um, we have our Chief Dylan, would you like to uh, comment on any report?
Sure, Madam Mayor, thank you. So I'd just like to say, uh, thank you for the mayor and council for your continued support of the police department. I'm very proud of the department, I'm proud of the borough, I'm proud to be a resident, and um, I, I really think we're on a good trajectory, and we're uh, really doing some great things in the community, continuing to do great things. I have three employees underneath me who genuinely care about the safety and welfare of our residents and visitors. So thank you again for all your support, I do appreciate it deeply.
Thank you. And happy almost birthday.
I appreciate it.
Our CFO, um, Allison Altona, do you have any report?
Um, just that it's been a smooth transition getting to be a part of Allendale, working with everyone, it's been great, my status is great. Um, and it's so fun, you know, the budget has been active, being this point, watching everybody get through it, did it? Um.
Excellent, thank you very much. And our Borough Attorney, Ray Wiss?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, actually been a very busy couple of weeks. Um, the uh, TJ in my office uh, got a very favorable decision for the Borough on a GRC complaint that was filed, I guess, about three years ago in connection with our phone vendor. Uh, so the GRC dismissed that complaint, which was a positive result. Tom Bursch is been involved on negotiations with the uh, cell tower carriers. Um, our cell tower lease uh, expires at the end of this month. Uh, there's a co-location agreement between two of the carriers. Um, and apparently one of the carriers wasn't aware of that, and just we had to educate them as to that on Monday. Um, but I think what we're anticipating is sometime between now and the end of May is having a one-year extension um, of, and we're trying to put both carriers in place at the same time so that then the Borough can negotiate an orderly renewal lease of a five or ten-year term. So those two things have gone on, been working uh, with uh, with Ron on various property maintenance and other insundry items that seem to arise from time to time. Um, the uh, Councilwoman Holman mentioned the, the water utility. I guess, Ron, we had about a forty-five minute meeting, uh, Zoom meeting with Violia this morning, and then we had about another thirty minutes or so uh, with our internal team. Um, and as was mentioned, uh, it, it's, it's a very formative uh, point in time. The uh, position we're in now is there are certain monies that have been held uh, back by way of escrow pending completion of those items by the Borough as part of the transfer. Um, the biggest one is probably involving um, the wetlands area, particularly the celery farm, where um, some of the water utility was put in um, uh, after the uh, the property was designated as green acres. So we need to get Green Acres approval to leave the infrastructure in place. Um, that will no doubt be forthcoming, uh, but there is what's called a diversion process, which means that the Borough will probably have to designate, and today we learned it may be about two acres of property um, as passive recreation uh, in the future. But that's, I think that's proceeding in good order. Uh, what Violi is doing right now is that they're having their utility company come out and mark out all of the easements to locate where they are throughout the Borough. Uh, then the surveyor goes out and does the description of that um, uh, of the utility location. And then after that, it gets reduced to meets and bounds. And then after that, we get involved again on the lawyer side in reducing the easements to a written agreement, which gets recorded.
Super simple.
Yes, also, so I mean, there's almost as much trailing work as there was leading into the transaction. Um, but um, but it, it is actually, albeit a little bit of slow because we've had to depend on Violi's people to get that done. Um, I think today's update, Ron, was a, was a positive one. Yeah, a lot, lot really going on in the field, so I think that that's uh, that's pretty important. Um, I do want to mention the um, the litigation settlement that the, the governing body approved. Um, this governing body had the, the foresight several years ago to move from um, what I'll call is the, the old-time subjective ordinance, where there were no criteria for promotion. Uh, and I was asked to prepare a, an ordinance, uh, that was done. Uh, and I will say that unfortunately, uh, promotion litigation's gotten to be a little bit of a cottage industry. Obviously, anytime someone gets promoted, somebody else didn't get promoted. Uh, and all too often it results in litigation. But this council had the foresight to uh, ask that an objective ordinance be created. And um, the, the good part, I think, about this settlement is both the ordinance that we created together um, has been essentially ratified, the implementation of the ordinance, and that's what the mayor and the councilwoman were speaking to. The fact that the process itself has also been validated. Uh, it was a process that had a written component, uh, that is a test score. It had an interview by the Public Safety Committee, it had an interview by the entire governing body, it had criteria set forth. Um, and um, a- as the mayor mentioned, uh, uh, the best man got the job, and it was done through a validated process. So I, I think that the good part about this settlement is that it, it validates what really was the foresight of the governing body in creating that type of ordinance going forward. Um, so I, I think on that end, that's, that's kudos to all. Um, I, I, I will mention, uh, to Councilwoman Lovasola's uh, uh, point on the budget is, you know, representing a lot of municipalities, this is an awful budget year. Um, between the, the, the hauling uh, price increases, we're fortunate here that, I guess we have another year overlapping, good job, Mr. Kistner. Um, and um, but also the, the state health benefits, uh, you know, running at about twenty-three, twenty-four percent in one year is an astronomical component of everyone's budget. And all I hear from CFOs and Allison, I'm sure you hear from your, your peers, is this is an awful year. Um, so yes, there is a fortuity associated um, with the water utility sale. Um, but it's also a very good budgetary process that I think, a zero increase budget is not gonna be the uh, the word that's out there in Bergen County this year, that's, that's for sure. Um, I think that that is it, oh, and the mayor asked me uh, uh, earlier this week to get back involved in the uh, bid spec process for two twenty. Um, so that is, you know, proceeding in, in, I think, a very positive fashion, and looks like uh, uh, after several years, it looks like it's, it's actually taking root. With all that being said, yes, I did go see Mickey Dolenzin concert that night.
Yes.
First of all, the credit, uh, to the government, to the markets. To be honest, I might have, you must go to three point five. Trying to do a great job, the only thing, blocking, and we're gonna talk more on Monday, getting, watch, watch the back of the lease. It was very professional, but it's done.
Professional, that's starting.
Just he did a great job.
Next one.
Thanks, Ron, thanks, everybody.
Important, I mean, it's just, yeah.
Thank you, Ray, for everything. Um, okay, next we have a public comment section, anybody from the public would like to come up and speak? Lana? Please state your name and your address for the record. Putting that microphone up there, thank you. People at home can hear.
It, it picks up for the recording purposes, too, that's.
Yeah.
Good, Linda?
I guess.
Okay.
Jewel microphone, should I get the camera out?
I'm not, I'm not camera ready.
You are, you are.
Anyway, uh, I'm Laura Amos, one sixteen Albrook Drive, Allendale, New Jersey, most of you guys are familiar with. Um, I just wanted to call, you know, the short notice on the change, this is a really pet peeve, I'm sorry, but it does impact the budget in a small way. Um, that they changed the compost hours, I'm not so surprised they changed the um, recycling hours because, you know, midday is fine to drop off a boxer, but for compost, it's a long planned process in order to get your leaves off your yard in time. And for people who work Monday through Friday, only having a Saturday just will not, will not suffice. It, we, I will not get my yard cleaned in that time. I mean, I've lived here for over thirty years, and I've watched the hours, and I can understand why the hours would be reduced because I'm sure Sunday's probably time and a half or more, maybe, maybe double time. Um, and Wednesday evenings are probably time and a half. Um, but I can guarantee you that I cannot get my yard cleaned on just a Saturday. Because if I work Monday through Friday, I'm not gonna be out there Wednesday trying to mow my lawn and, and rake leaves and get it to the dump, the compost, on a Wednesday evening. Uh, however, on Saturday is when I start raking leaves, start mowing the lawn, start doing all the work that's got to be done. And it closes at three. Now, that was possible to work with if I had the Sunday, because Saturday I collect all the leaves, collect all the stuff. I don't know how many of you guys actually do your yard work?
I didn't.
So you might understand, on Saturday, you're out there getting everything together because time's running low.
Yeah.
Um, and then trying to get it there on Sunday, and, you know, I barely make it complete on Sunday. Uh, so, and I do like to have occasional Saturdays off, or when it rains. Um, so, and also, there's a lot of, there's some Jewish people in our town, too, who Saturdays are not gonna be very convenient for. So I, I, I understand that this is a difficult decision because it does incur something cost to the, the town. So I'd like to suggest something, and that would be, there are times when you need those extra hours, and there's times when you don't. You don't need them any time during the hot summer, okay? That's not when you're really doing your yard. You're doing your yard in early spring, in March and April is when you're doing the spring cleanup. And in October, November, December, you're doing the fall cleanup. So I would say that if you can get Sunday hours on, in like, well, you've actually moved it back from March to April now. So if you can get some Sunday hours on April, and you get some Sunday, April hours on November, October, the end of October, November, and early December, then that would probably be work. But I'll tell you, it's not that, it's, it's hard, you know, Amy, it's hard, hard work to get all that, all those leaves off the, you know, three quarters of an acre and into the dump on time, so.
Well, thank you, thank you for uh, coming to the council and, and expressing that. I mean, we, we try things, we, we do our best to accommodate, and, you know, we'll, we'll look into it as we always do with every.
I know, it was, and it was very short notice, too, it just kind of, I guess you ought to announce at some point, but it would have been nice to get some input to it before.
Point taken.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public would like to come up and speak? Not seeing anybody, we're ready to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
So moved, Holman.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Good night.